Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the October 20th, 2025 briefing. And this briefing is for our regular meeting on Thursday, October 23rd. We actually have a reasonably short agenda. I'm happy to turn it over to our county manager, Chantel Robinson. We have no discussion items either.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, Commissioners, staff, and guests. Agenda item number one is a resolution giving notice of intention to reduce the salary, allowances, and other compensation of a non-incumbent sheriff of Forsyth County who takes office in December 2026. Shannon Hutchins, our HR director, will brief this item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 153A-92, this resolution gives notice of intention to reduce the salary, allowances, and other compensation of a non-incumbent sheriff of Forsyth County who takes office on the first Monday in December 2026 to an annual salary of $134,509.63. The salary allowances and other compensation of an incumbent sheriff who is reelected in 2026 shall remain at the same level as of July 1st, 2026. The salary allowances and other compensation for a non-incumbent sheriff as designated herein shall take effect at the time the elected person takes office. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Any questions, Shannon?
And that's just a routine item we do every election, whether it's for register of deeds or the sheriff setting the salary if the incumbent sheriff ends up not winning. It's something we need to do for the Elections Office to set the filing fee.
So my question is, once the reelection happens and he's reelected, does he stay at his current salary?
Yes, ma'am, he does.
That's what I was saying.
Thank you. Agenda item number two is a resolution supporting Operation Green Light for veterans of Forsyth County, North Carolina. And we will be lighting up for green that week, and we'll present that on Thursday. Agenda item number three is approval of minutes for the meeting of October 9th. Madam Clerk, have those been emailed?
They were emailed out this morning.
Thank you. Agenda item number four is a resolution approving the amount to be spent by the Winston-Salem-Forsyth County Board of Education to acquire land to be used for the future Ashley Elementary School site in an amendment to the Education Capital Project's ordinance to transfer 505,000 from budget reserve to the new Ashley Elementary project. Lee Plunkett, our Deputy Finance Officer, will brief this item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Briefly, we've got two items for you today that's related to the new Ashley Elementary School project. The first is a request for approval from the Board of Education to purchase a parcel of land for the project, since state statute requires that your approval, it requires your approval to purchase land beforehand. And the piece of property, as described in your packet, is a .13-acre vacant lot, and the purchase price is $55,000. The second item is an amendment to the Education Capital Project's ordinance to move 505,000 from the school's budget reserve, which is made up of the 2023 GO 2/3 bonds, to the Ashley School project budget. The 505,000 covers the $55,000 land purchase just described, $100,000 for construction administration fees, and $350,000 in architect fees. After this transfer, there will be 16.5 million left in that budget reserve from the 2023 2/3 bonds. Darryl Walker is here to answer any specific questions about those requests. I'm happy to answer anything I can.
Good. Questions for Lee?
Do you happen to know the zoning of that parcel? It's a nice little odd corner there adjacent to the park. It's heavily treed now, but it'd be, you'd have a hard time using it for anything unless it's zoned commercial for some reason.
I don't have that. Darryl, do you know?
Good afternoon. Yes, we actually had the rezoning meeting last Thursday at the planning board for the whole property, everything involved within this particular project.
Was that .13 in that proposal?
It was included in that.
What's the planned use?
Yes.
What's the planned use?
It's industrial IP.
Institutional. But it's now zoned institutional?
Correct.
So have you all actually already purchased this property?
No, we have not. We have not purchased it yet. We did include it in the packet when we went before the zoning, planning.
What does the school want to use it for?
Oh, okay. So it actually is a parcel that's next to what we originally purchased. The main reason behind the purchase is it prevents us from having to build a $500,000 retaining wall.
Just can you elaborate a little bit on that? Because .13 acres is around probably 5,000 square feet. Is, and the retention is going to be based, is all based on the square footage of the total property. Are you going to tell me you're only 5,000 short? Is that what you're trying to say?
Well, there's a, let me try to explain. So originally, we were not going to purchase the property when we, when we kind of went and got the whole package together the original time. We didn't really think there was a need for it. When we got through the design process, there's an elevation change at this particular lot to what the property we owned. When we got to looking through the design portion and putting the cost together for the project, there's a significant retaining wall that was going to have to be built there. It made more sense to go ahead and purchase the property than to build the wall financially. And that was a decision we made to try to pursue it. We actually have been trying to pursue this property for a couple of years, quite honestly. But that was the main reason why we moved forward with the purchase of the property.
And it'll be graded then to avoid the wall?
Correct.
And then have no use other than that?
Not really.
Okay.
Actually, that didn't make my question clear enough. What is the present zoning for the property?
Residential.
What could they put on it?
They being us?
No, the current owner.
Residential.
On a .13 acre?
Yes.
Okay. What's the tax value?
Somewhere close to probably 20,000.
I think, actually, Attorney, no.
I was just going to say, according to the tax records, the current zoning is PB, which is pedestrian business, and the tax value is 19,000, which was the exact amount of the last sale in 2020.
I think, I don't know, maybe people are not saying, but I have a little heartburn over the price. I mean, 55,000, are there other things included in the 55,000?
There's our, there's our closing fees and attorney fees in there. So it's like 50,000 for the land and 5,000 additional cost for services.
What would it be, what would the cost be for the retainer wall versus trying to get the, acquire this land to?
There's a, there's a $450,000 delta there.
Let me, I'm still back on it. It's not a square footage thing, so it's really the orientation of the building on the site? Is that what you're trying to tell me?
It is.
And so there were not other possible orientations of the building on the site where you didn't need this little 5,000 square feet?
It's a really tight site. There's only like seven, eight acres there. It's really tight. So there wasn't a lot of room to play with there.
And if I understand correctly, they're basically considered, they're sort of two different footprints, square footage, footprints of this building?
So the one that we're currently working with now is, and part of you're seeing the cost impact that's in the request, is that we reduce the square footage by 32,000 feet, basically taking out some square footage in the second floor.
So, and that, so that's just in the, so the footprint stays the same, you're taking square footage out of the second floor?
Correct.
So the footprint still creates the problem with the retaining wall?
Correct.
With limited ability to change the site?
Correct.
Well, just out of curiosity, you mentioned you had been, you had been working on this for two years to negotiate a price. And I take it, you tried all kinds of things. Was there ever a discussion of condemning the property?
There was some discussion about that on our side. There wasn't a lot of support to kind of move forward on that. So I just, we backed off of that.
And I think the rationale at the time was we did not want to intrude upon a citizen's property, whether they were living in it or what have you. So we just did not, and I would hope still not have appetite to remove citizens from their property without, you know, a fair price according to, you know, what they're asking for, for their property.
Is there a house on this property?
Not currently.
I did not think so. So it's a treed corner lot of about $5,000. And I'm going to have a hard time supporting spending over twice what its value is. I just have a hard time with that. And I almost think a condemnation, that's when appraisals come out and everything gets appraised. Each gets their appraisal, and the judge decides what it's worth. And I believe the judge is going to decide it's worth less than $50,000. And you've probably got some time. It'll take, it'd probably take six months to run that course to do it. But I think you have a public need, say $500,000, that would meet that requirement. Our attorney may comment on that part, but it seems to me you would do it. And I just can't see, I can't see that kind of, I can't see this, I don't care if it is just $25,000. You don't throw $25,000 away.
I believe if a private citizen was trying to buy it other than the school system, it would not be that price.
And I would disagree with throwing the money away. I think that, you know, a citizen owns that property, and I guess they have made it publicly known to the school district what they would sell that property for. And of course, this has been a 10, 15-year movement to put a school well-deserved in this part of our community. And so to say, throwing away $25,000 when we know that there has been a need for a new Ashley, you know, I would say probably Commissioner Martin, since you were superintendent. So I mean, I understand that there may be concern that maybe we don't agree with the asking price, but I hope that there is absolute strong consideration that we need to move forward with the build of Ashley. And it's well worth $25,000 to make sure that we put a new Ashley in East Winston as soon as possible, since we've waited on it for over at least 10 years since I've been involved in the movement on the school board side.
Just as a matter of a difference of opinion, this would not prevent the new Ashley School from being built. It would not prevent it at all. It's just going to take a little more time to not be held hostage on the price of this .13-acre parcel. It doesn't keep the building from being built. It doesn't even interrupt the time schedule. It's just a matter of going through the process of condemning the property for the public good. And I feel confident that the end result would be less than 50,000. Anyway, that's the way I'm going to vote. I don't know, I don't know how everybody else.
What's the timeframe, Darryl, that, to do the request to make it available for us to move forward without, I guess, consideration of what the owner is asking for cost? Is that timeline kind of in conjunction with the timeline to get Ashley built anyhow?
So is it, is it actually needed to build the school now? The decision to move forward was a decision around the money side of it, quite honestly. So, so our plan is to bring a GMP back to our board and this board sometime January, February, and start the bidding process sometime shortly after that. But it's not a necessary item for this particular project. It just saves us on that retaining wall.
Maybe the county attorney can give us an idea about the cost of condemnation here.
It's hard to say. Obviously, I believe the school system would hire an outside counsel, and that would cost something. They could get an order condemning the property and allowing the project to move forward. That may not take a terrible long time. But what could take a longer time is establishing the actual valuation, which, of course, then you have fees of hiring appraisers and whatnot. So it could, it could run up, you know, several tens of thousands possibly.
Well, it sounds like a stick-up to me, but it's probably not a bad deal, given the constraints that have been relayed here today.
So my last question to you, Mr. Walker, is can you go back to the owner of the? So my last question to you, Mr. Walker, is can you go back to the owner of the property and kind of give them an update of where we are, you know, as it relates to, it looks like the Commissioners are not going to kind of, you know, agree with that sale of the property, and maybe it'll encourage them to decrease the price in lieu of what the tax value is?
Sure. I'll be happy to do that.
Other questions for Darryl? James, thank you.
Agenda item number five is a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement with Kelly Office Machines doing business as Kelly Office Solutions, release of copiers to Forsyth County for a four-month period, provide click-rate printing on a per-month basis, and six-month licensing and support for the paper cut subscription platform. Jason Ring, our IT Technology Manager, will brief this item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and thank you for your time this afternoon. What we have is they have a short-term contract before you, just basically extending our current printer copier fleet, we call them multifunction devices, for a period of four months, while we have also proposed a, through city-county purchasing, we put out a RFP for new multifunction devices, and we have received those responses. We have five responses of six proposals that we're currently evaluating now. So what, before you today, is just to extend our current contract just a little bit while we review the proposals that we've received so far.
Any questions for Jason?
Thank you.
Agenda item number six is a resolution authorizing an amendment to the agreement with Piedmont Service Group LLC for on-call repair services for HVAC systems at five county-owned facilities located at Smith Reynolds Airport. Mark Davidson, our airport director, will brief this item.
Good afternoon. The airport department would like to amend what you just mentioned, a service contract with Piedmont Services Group LLC that started July 1st of this year for preventive maintenance plus air filters and on-call repair services for the HVA systems at five of our facilities. The five facilities include like 4001 North Liberty Street, which is leased by North State Aviation, 4400 Lansing, which is Piedmont Propulsion, 3820 is that hangar across the street with Aero Eight, and Piedmont Aviation Snack Bar, and the new group Piedmont Turbine Solutions, which is really doing great. Also includes our airfield maintenance shop at the airport, as well as the new main terminal. When I say new, you might be saying, why would we have a preventive maintenance contract? We salvaged the chiller. It's only a few years old, so we still need to maintain that. It's not under warranty with, under the renovations. So to obtain the lowest price, the airport department solicited informal bids in March of 2025, received the following bids, base bids for annual preventive maintenance, included Piedmont Service Group at $27,126, Logan Heating and Air, $27,890, and Sylvester and Cochrane at $28,680, which they're all very close. We entered into an agreement with Piedmont Service Group, agreeing to pay $26,383 for preventive annual maintenance service, plus $2,865 for air filters, and $20,000 for on-call service repairs. Due to a number of HVAC breakdowns this past summer, we would like to amend the agreement, the current agreement, add $30,000 for on-call repair services. So we just don't want our tenants to be without HVAC at any time, and we want to be ahead of it.
Can you talk a little bit about the actual bid specifications, where you got to collect at the prices? I mean, I assume you got an hour, a labor hour cost for repairs?
Yeah, I think the way it was done by the staff and myself was, we wanted to look at something, compare apples to apples, because when you start talking about per hour, they have with assistant, without assistant, overtime, you know, travel, all that. They're all so crazy that we just picked preventive maintenance, that fee that was going to be fixed for all three of them. So that's how we did that, and that's why we entered into the contract for the preventive maintenance element. And then there's the air filter, and then there's on-call. So now we have, we used a lot of the on-call this past summer with especially 4001, the facility at North State's leasing. So that's why we want to up the on-call portion.
Is it, I'm having troubles, does on-call in this situation mean, I mean, that's not preventative maintenance?
No, 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 no. The service contract included preventive maintenance for annual, and that's what all the prices were.
Right.
And then we had air filters, because there's a number of air filters throughout this facility. And then on-call services, the case, North State calls and says, hey, the HVAC is not working, get out here. So the way it is with procurement rules with the county, we'd have to get three estimates, all that kind of stuff. So we have that on-call element to this service contract for those five facilities, because we need to get acting quick with all our tenants. That help?
A little. It just, since you didn't get a price, a labor price or an hour price, and I understand the confusion, assistance, not overtime, travel, all the things that you mentioned. I understand that. But basically, you have no rate for that, so the vendor, the three vendors were close. I mean, the three people that submitted bills, you know, looking at 27.1, 27.8, 28.6, they were very close. So if the on-call is already, in basically four months, has already used up to 20,000, and we're going to another 30, I mean, how do we know that the other two companies wouldn't have given us a better on-call price, because there's no on-call price?
There's, yeah, but if you look inside the backup, there is on-call for all those elements, for the assistant, with the overtime.
So that's, so it is used, so you are using that.
It's in that service agreement that they submitted to us, and that we included as a backup in your agenda item. We can do it a different way. I just want to be ahead of it. If you, if you want us to go a different way of bin this out, we can, we can rebid it out.
No, it just seems like, I thought you just got through saying you only looked at preventative maintenance.
For the bids, yes.
Yeah, for the bid. So that means ever who got the bid, you're accepting whatever they choose. You don't have that information for the three vendors. I got your thing right here. You don't have those costs for the three different vendors.
I'm open to.
Well, I mean, I think you're into it this year, let's get through, get it through the year, but you may be back here in three months with another extension.
I agree. We're talking about five facilities, like we went to our legislators asking for money for 4001, that facility is falling apart. And I might be back to you, asking for more money. Or we could bid it out again. I, yeah, I just, it's very critical for our tenants to have HVAC, especially in that 4001 breaks down.
I disagree with any of that. I disagree with the, with the purpose. I'm just disagreeing with the, with the way that the bid was done, in terms of how you're going to get the services.
This is, this is an operating budget figure, and we need to stay within reasonableness. But I can't tell you if they won't break down again.
Well, no, you're going to, never mind.
Yeah, I get it.
Never mind. The competition I was looking at was on all the charges, of the hourly charges. That's where there may be a savings, because that's the big part of this contract, is in the amount you're spending for the on-call services. I mean, it's going to be, you're already looking at 50,000 compared to the 20-something to do the preventive maintenance. And clearly, there are different people, and I mean, I'm sure it's competitive, and obviously, those three folks were competitive, but they get their pencils out, and you know, then you at least know, when you're paying for on-call services, you know what you're getting in advance. But for this year, I'm fine, I'm going to support it, but I just can't quite understand that, the reasoning behind it.
Okay. And I'd like to talk to you after the meeting, and you can give me some more guidance, I think, compare apples to apples when we do this again.
Okay. Any other questions for Mark? Thank you.
Agenda item number seven is a resolution authorizing execution of a lease agreement between Forsyth County and the City of Winston-Salem for lease of 4,357 square feet of county-owned real property located at 651 Highland Avenue. Emily Mundy, our property manager, will brief this item.
Good afternoon. This item is for approval of a lease agreement between Forsyth County and the City of Winston-Salem for 4,357 square feet of space located at 651 Highland Avenue, known as the NX2 Building. The premises will be used solely for the purpose of providing a temporary overflow shelter for unhoused individuals seeking overnight shelter services from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. This lease is for a period beginning November 15th, 2025, and ending March 1st, 2026, unless sooner terminated by the landlord with a 30-day written notice. Services may not begin until all required building modifications are completed and approved in writing by the local code official and the landlord. And during the term of the agreement, the landlord will provide basic utilities, and the tenant will provide routine janitorial. In lieu of additional rent, the tenant will reimburse the landlord for all services rendered in the previous month, to include grounds, maintenance and repairs. Happy to answer any questions?
Few questions.
What's the occupancy?
There will be a maximum of 20 male individuals and 15 female individuals in two separate housing dormitories.
In the online materials on today's agenda, there's a proposed lease. Was that prepared by our staff?
Yes.
Okay. It's extremely detailed. I went through that, and it's, you know, protecting us for about everything.
I'll just say that Emily did a great job on this with some help from Chelsea. They really dug into this, and there's a lot of outfit that needs to be done to bring it up to code, and we just, they've made sure that that's in there.
Yeah, thank you.
Is that another one of these where if the rent's not promptly paid, the late fee is a nickel?
The late fee would be 5%.
That's right.
Of any unpaid balance.
Okay. Seems shocking.
Actually, that would apply to the reimbursement, wouldn't it?
Yes, sir.
All right, so that, that would actually be a more significant sum, 5 cents. Interesting. Thank you.
Do you have a cost, expected cost of the upfits that's required?
I do not, and unfortunately, I don't believe that the city has that yet either, but they do have some staff here who may be able to provide some figures. If you'd like to hear that, that would be the city's responsibility.
Okay. Well, I'm probably fine with you going. I think we're pretty far down the road on that. And we'll obviously evaluate it after we do it. Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda items eight and nine are resolutions approving refunds by the Tax Assessor Collector. Eight is in the amount of $24,094.17, and nine is in the amount of $283.48. And 10 through 12 are our reports. 10 is the August Human Resources Report, 11 is the September Contribution-Based Benefit Cap Report, and 12 is the September Financial Report. That's all of our agenda items. Mr. Chair?
Wow.
That's amazing.
We're good. One comment?
The financial report. It's not here in hard copy form, and it's, it doesn't, it's not attached to the advanced agenda.
That is because it will probably be ready by Thursday. We put it as a placeholder so that we are not late in submitting it, but it's usually they're doing final closing, is my assumption, and so they'll be uploaded before Thursday.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Well, we stand adjourned.